Okay. I would like to call the order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Monday, January 9th at 7:03 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for December 12th, 2022. I think everybody had a chance to review them and make edits. So did anyone have anything else they wanted to add to the minutes?
No.
Not all undertake a motion to approve them. Motion by Pat, second by Lisa, all in favor. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is for anyone from the public to comment on anything that's not already on the agenda for tonight.
I'm Carl Larso, and I'm here observing the community report.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing for special permit number 20224575. McGuire Chevrolet Cadillac located 35 Cinema Drive, text parcel number 46.1-6-5.12, is seeking to update the existing building with improvements to the interior showroom areas, service area, and body shop. John Snyder representing McGuire Chevy Cadillac will review the proposed changes, which include a new entrance to the west facade and a second floor for the new Cadillac showroom. And Bear, I think, is online, yep, to provide us with some updates on, I know that you guys, oh, and actually Mike's got his hand up, but I know you guys went to the BZA and there have been some other modifications. So Mike, do you want to start?
I just wanted to state the obvious that Brent's out with us, and I was hoping he was going to finalize his investigation on this special permit, but he's been sick for a few days now.
So Brent will not be here with us tonight. So, but Bear, do you want to kind of fill us in on where you're at with everything?
Yeah, so currently we went to BZA. All the variances that we were seeking have been granted. At this point, we've updated the site plan, which I can share in a moment. Updated the site plan based off of the engineers' comments, all of our documentations and all the SWPs, all that stuff. As far as I'm aware, everything is to par and meets everyone's expectations at this point. The lighting plan has also been updated to be compliant with the ordinance. It is, all the areas are below the threshold for all the new site lighting. There's a few areas of existing site lighting from the Nissan project that exceed, but I can show you that in a moment. But other than that, I think we're pretty much set for your final comments and review of this. So let me go ahead and just share those few changes real quick. And then I'm happy to answer any questions as we do reports. I'm gonna zoom down to the site plan. So the biggest change to really note from what you guys saw previously is the sidewalk along Uptown Road. It was requested that we push that away from the road and towards the property to create a lawn area for snowplow and snow removal to go there. We chose to keep it the same distance that exists on Cinema Drive. This way that the snow can be removed, but it also allows us to have a nice planting buffer between the sidewalk and the property to enhance the views for everyone. And with that, there was a couple of catch bases and adjustments to make sure that drainage is adequate for everyone. Moving on down, the lighting plan, as you can see, has been updated to all the spots being at five-foot candles or less in this entire area here. There is a little overage from the existing site light that was here from the Nissan project, as well as there's a little overage from the existing Nissan parcel over here. But all the new lighting that is associated with this project currently meets that five-foot candle maximum threshold. Moving, moving on down, the elevations are all the same as previous, finishes are the same. As mentioned, all the variances that we were seeking were granted, including all the signage. This included the side yard setback, a bunch of parking setbacks, and also the signage variance. And we did update our planting plans. We are looking at adding a few more ornamental trees along the south side of the property in between McGuire's and the plaza next door. And because of the sidewalk adjustment, we did go through and adjust the planting layout. Still trying to keep it as aesthetically pleasing as possible, but there's going to be a little bit more of that grass buffer in between the sidewalk and the road because the grass will hold up the best with all the salt. And I'm cleaning up the vegetation over by the ditch area. And this is the current palette of planting that we're going to be incorporating into the project.
Mike, was there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I'm, I'm pretty good with everything. I mean, at one point I had brought up where the, where the water supply would be for the fire department. We can handle that during the building permit, that's not a real issue. Other than that, I'm pretty much satisfied, the lighting plan, Bear's done a really good job of that from when they originally started. And at this point, it looks 99% as far as being compliant. There was a couple of parts that Bear was working on, like he said, but I'm sure he can get that moved and he can move forward with it. Other than that, I don't really have any issues.
I do want to open it up to obviously other folks on the board if you have questions. One of, one of the things that, you know, I'll comment on and that other folks can chime in, obviously, is this is kind of the first time that we've, you know, we've seen this in a little bit. And since some of the changes that Bear just brought up, we also, unfortunately, like Mike mentioned, Brent's out sick, so he's not here to give his final engineering report. But my suggestion would be that, you know, everyone could take this back, look at it. If there's, you know, questions that Bear can't answer tonight, and we can vote on this at the next meeting as opposed to tonight, to give us some time to look over, look over what was here in front of you when we showed up. I think, Mike, you also emailed this out today, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be my suggestion again, if other people feel differently. But with that, I will turn it over for folks with any last questions.
I have some questions about the signs. Bear, this sign, the Chevrolet sign?
Yes.
The style of that is so different from the other two dealerships, like the Nissan and Cadillac, which were kind of more pylon. And could you explain, number one, why that is? And number two, why does McGuire have to be in three places? Now, I know that the BZA approved this, but I still, good thing I wasn't, I wasn't on the BZA. At any rate, can you help me understand all this?
Yes, so currently the McGuire name will only appear in two locations. It will appear on the Cadillac pylon sign, and it will appear on the front of the building by the Chevrolet entrance. So let me find a bird's eye. So you'll see it right here in front of the Chevy dealership. Oh, I apologize, it will, it will be in three locations on the pylon sign as well. And so the reason why the Chevy pylon is different than the shape of Caddy and Nissan is solely due to branding. When these manufacturers come out with their branded image and their look, they are very strict about dictating how certain things have to look, what sizes they have to be, all those aspects. It would be, it's not out of the realm of possibility to request to have a different shape on that sign. Personally, I would prefer to have it be similar to the other ones. But the two notes I would say why we wouldn't want to do that is, A, I can't guarantee that that would get approved from the manufacturer. And second of all, it is on the corner, so any traffic coming to and from that corner, having a large solid object there may block some of the views, which is less ideal.
I guess I, I didn't understand. Now, the Cadillac, you know, it's, it's back and off, and it's on the building. Why the standalone one quite, I just didn't quite understand why. It wouldn't be on the building itself.
Cadillac isn't on the building either.
No, the, no, the pylon isn't, is it? It's out front.
The pylon set off the building.
It's out front, yeah.
Yeah, yep, so.
Yeah, that, that view.
Yeah, so right here you have the Cadillac. We located this one on Uptown to be proximity-wise, close to the Cadillac dealership to make that feel cohesive. And then we put Chevy on this corner to try it again, also make it cohesive with Chevrolet.
All right, thank you.
Lisa, just to be clear, the BZA approved the square footage and the amount of signs. So by you asking, you're not closed out of it as far as saying, well, I would, I'd like to see this sign here, this sign there. They've approved the square footage and the number of signs, okay?
Right, not the aesthetics, right.
I have a comment. I'm pleased to see that the shrubbery and vegetation that there's, as I look at it, and I'm so, and hopefully, this is what I see in these renderings, is what's actually going to be done. But there's, there's a nice variety of shapes and colors and textures of that. Too many places just throw up some evergreens, and it looks very boring, not attractive. And I think, I think that planned landscaping for the shrubbery and vegetation, I think, was nice.
Thank you. Yeah, so that is a driving factor behind a lot of the decisions that the McGuire team has made in recent years on their properties. It's trying to improve the landscaping to fit better with a community's desire and be a good neighbor. And so you'll see the selection of the plants that we have made. We intentionally tried going for either native plants or plants that are going to not be invasive and be hardy in this climate to try to give a visual presence any season throughout the year. For instance, we have the dwarf winterberries for the wintertime. We have the Arctic fir dogwood for a lot of the fall and wintertime as well. And you have the different shapes and textures to try to really play up throughout the different seasons, that there is something that's attractive, no matter what time of year it is for the property, and try to keep it low maintenance, so it, it never looks bad. So I appreciate you noticing that, because that is something that we have put a lot of effort into to, to make sure we do this right.
Yeah, Millen.
Would you like me to comment?
I was gonna say, can you help us with some of those?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, so one thing I will say that I'm pleased to see, your, your 3D renderings have actually fewer plants than you have in your planting plan. So, so I'm actually very pleased to see that, that this looks sparser here than it does in the drawing itself. So if what you're doing is what's going to be in the drawing, then that's excellent. There's a couple of notes that I have. So there are some spots where you have kind of wider areas of mulch. And my question is more of a, a longer-term maintenance question. When you have kind of these like islands of shrubs in, in, in a lot of mulch, if it's not taken care of, it gets weedy. And oftentimes, if it is taken care of, it's taken care of because somebody goes out with a lot of roundup. So what is the plan for, yeah, especially that side that has more of a?
Yeah. So, so these hatched regions that you're seeing are actually not mulch. There will be mulch put down initially for the planting, the initial planting, while things are maturing and getting an opportunity to take root. But a lot of these are going to be ground cover. So the idea is that we're trying to find vegetation and ground covers that will fully encapsulate the entire area. So then that way, no mulch will be visible, nor does it need to be maintained over time. A good example of one of the species that we're looking at doing that with is the mondo grass that we have indicated here. This mondo grass off to the side will spread within its area and, or, sorry, it won't spread. You, you plant it at intervals, it opens up to its mass, and will eventually do is cover that entire area that it's been planted in. And when it does that, it takes over the mulch, and it's very difficult for weeds to grow through those types of vegetation, given the dense root structure of them. So that's, that's the intent. There may have to be maintenance that happens throughout the process, because any new construction project that we have, majority of the plants survive, but every so often it does happen where a few will die off. But if that happens, the McGuires have been very good and proactive, making sure that they're replacing those plants that don't make it, and making sure that it stays nice and updated. I think a good example of this recently is the Ford dealership. A lot of the vegetation down there, we're trying to improve upon that list of plants that we have there to try and make sure that the things that did survive and do well from that project are moving forward. And the things that didn't do well, we're trying to find better solutions for that.
And was the mondo grass one that was at that Ford dealership?
No, so the Ford dealership.
That's on the cusp of its survivability here. So it's, it's one that, because it's not in its kind of favorite zone, it's really, it works well at a protected area, but it's slower to grow here than it is in, you know, if you're down like in Philadelphia or something. So that might, you might have some trouble with that, so keep an eye on that one. The other one that you have, the lily turf, that does really well and does exactly what you're saying it's gonna do, very nicely. But you have the wrong name on that.
Do I?
Yeah, it's Liraipe muscari.
Okay. My apologies on that.
That's why I was looking, I'm like, wait a second, because Liraipe will do that, whereas the mondo grasses tend to be a little bit slower and a little bit more vulnerable in our area.
So say again, so you're saying that the giant lily turf?
Does very well.
But it's, it's not called giant lily turf?
That's the common name. They have, it's their Latin name that's.
Oh, it's up here.
Ophiopagon vivuron vitalitis, that, it's actually Liraipe muscari is the giant lily turf.
Oh, I see, over here.
So that's, I just wanted to make sure that I knew which one you were doing. So if you're intending Liraipe, then you're all clear. If you're intending Ophiopagon, I'm, I hate saying that.
Yeah.
If you're intending the Ophiopagon, then you might end up with a thing that looks a lot more sparse than you want.
All right, I, I will definitely review that with our landscape architects, because that, it's not our intent to have something die out, so we don't want that. So I'll, I'll review that with them.
Yeah, I, I would say like check and see other, if they have a site that's in zone five that's done well, get some backup for that, so that you know what they did in that particular site to make it work, because it's really kind of at the edge of where it can grow.
Okay.
You have impeccable eyesight, because I can't, I can't even with my glasses on read it.
So underneath, underneath the red buds, what's, what is, what is that underneath the red buds? Because I have red buds in my yard, you start with one. And I now have at certain times of the year, it looks like a Japanese garden back there. So they are very happy here, but they do spread. So I'm wondering what, not that that would be a bad thing.
That would not be a bad thing at all here.
But I'm just wondering, just be aware of that, that'll be all.
Yeah, so currently under the red bud areas, so within the site itself, it's this ground cover mass one, we have a combination of mondo grass, the spacing on it, the lily,
Lily.
The lily turf and a mix of the blonde ambition. And then over in the drainage area, we want to clean that up because it's very overgrown and it's, it's not ideal for anyone, I think, especially with the walking path right there. So we want to clean that up and get a seed mix in there and get a lot of the blonde ambition in there with a bunch of the red buds.
Well, the red buds will look great.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, and that was the other thought, is along that walking path, we want to open up the views back and forth a little bit, and also try to make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing for anyone walking along that edge.
And if you're looking for any other plants to add to the palette that does that kind of ground cover that suppresses weeds, Nepeta is one that's really successful and does that really nicely. And then, yeah, that, that would be a, if you need more spots where you've got something that will spread, if it makes kind of, you know, like a three-foot wide mound, if you get the mounding kind, and weeds never get through that.
And the bees love it.
The bees do love it.
Is there comments or questions? Does anyone have any issue with waiting until the next meeting to kind of make sure our bothers?
I think you're right on it. So we can be absolutely certain you have enough to.
So take a look at this. Now, and then if you have any questions, send them to Mike, and Mike can reach out to Bear to get things answered. And that we'll plan on moving forward at the next meeting, Bear with the, with the resolution.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks a lot, Bear.
All right, thank you.
Already on to other business. Okay, next item on the agenda, other business, discussion of the proposal or? So Lisa and I met before winter break, before, before Christmas and New Year's. We're gonna get together this weekend. What we're gonna do is we're gonna, instead of trying to come up with kind of pieces of the law, because it is kind of lengthy, if you look at the model one, I've gone through and I actually had a bunch of questions for Mike, which he was nice enough to answer, and that's why I have the Uniform Standards Codebook in front of me right now, which actually, talk about what I'm looking for, so. But what we're gonna do is Lisa and I are gonna get together this weekend, hopefully have Carolyn join us too. We're just gonna take that, we're gonna flag the areas, right? Because it's not meant to like, you know, take this, fill in the blank, and here's your local law. It's meant for us to, you know, there are some fill-in-the-blanks, like, hey, are you a village city or what are your municipality? Who reviews stuff? Is it the planning board, is it the board of trustees, or whatever other, you know, board or setup you have? So I've gone through and I'm almost done with highlighting those areas. There's a series of things that we need to decide on, which Lisa and Carol and I sort of discussed to give some guidance, as we do talk about it as a larger group. But then the other thing is just have everybody get eyes on it and say, hey, we have a question about this, you know, this sentence here, or this comment here, you know. Some places they're saying, you know, you need a special permit for everything. Well, maybe we don't want a special permit for everything. Maybe there are some simple things that we just want people to be able to get. Like if I want to go and put solar on my roof, a normal, you know, whether it's a single house or a duplex, you know, if I just want to go and put solar on my roof, do we really want all those coming here? Or is a use like that acceptable for just a building permit and Mike to handle? Versus somebody who wants to put in like, you know, a five-megawatt, you know, solar array somewhere, we probably want to have that go through the special permit process, so. Well, let's just start, there's a lot of, you know. It is like every other local law, there's a lot of, you know, filler and, you know, legal language in there that has to be there. But then there's gonna be some other areas, and we just want people to take a look at them, and we can flag those lines and say, is this how we want to do business in the village? Or is it, or no, and, you know, change those areas accordingly. So Lisa and Carolyn and I will take a first stab at that, and then we'll send that out to everybody else to take a look at before the next meeting.
Yeah, I think the main issues, well, I, this is the one, right? Is this the one? I, I keep thinking, I don't have the right one.
I sent it out, maybe, if that's not a different name.
I think the biggest one of the biggest sticking points is certainly not the roof mounted stuff. It's the ground mounted. And how, and I noticed that the town of Ithaca has a plan two that's quite extensive, and I was reluctant to print it out, but I really can't absorb things unless I do. So I would like to look at theirs too, because, but we've also talked about something to be thinking about is, if you have, you know, solar array of some sort on your house, how much over what you need would you consider appropriate to have go back into the system? And I think the state is 10% and.
A lot of the, they, they give you kind of, for the places where you get to pick, they kind of give you a default value. Some of them seem appropriate, some of them seem high.
Yeah.
But.
But I really think, we've, we've been talking about this, and I said, we really can't do this, just us. We really have to, as a group, go through this.
Which wasn't the goal ultimately, but I think, like I said, by the next meeting, we'll have something out after we meet this weekend. Because we'll tag some lines that we've already discussed. I know Carolyn had some comments, and so did Lisa and myself. And then we can add the other ones in there, and we can start discussing those. And Mike brought up an interesting point too, as I was talking to him. If you take a look at the model law, they've got things broken into four tiers. The fourth tier is the things that are gigantic, and the state really, you know, walks through that process. The third ones are pretty big too. But tiers two, three, and four almost solely focus on ground mounted things.
Yes.
All of roof stuff is in tier one. So Mike said a question, well, so if the mall wants to go and put solar panels everywhere across the top of the mall, they don't have to come for a special permit? If we decide to say, you don't need a special permit for tier one? So there are some things there like that for us to discuss. Because sure, if I'm putting solar on my house, I really don't want everyone just putting stuff on their roof to come here. But, I mean, for larger applications, but that's not how the model law is. So we might want to change those things around.
Have a residential versus commercial.
Which is what we talked about before, is a residential versus a commercial.
I don't know, get into the center, but my question is this, somebody in the house wants to put solar on the roof, how, how visible is it to the neighbors?
I don't think it matters.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking is it, because it would have been, well, most houses, of course, have pitched roofs, so it would probably be visible.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I'm thinking of, unless it's on like the backside of a house, but then.
Half the time, that's not the base.
That's not the right way, yeah. I mean, if you go like, if you go around Jannevar, the people, I guess there's not a lot of, well, your neighbor, there, there are a couple houses, at least one, that's visible from the front, and I don't even think about it when I drive by.
I was gonna say, do you find it objectionable on the roof?
I don't know, I haven't had a chance to think about it or look at it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't find it objectionable on the house. I really.
Yeah, that part I.
At all, frankly, and honestly, having it, having it visible encourages more people to do exactly that. And we do want people to choose those options when they can.
But I, but I do find it difficult, the ground mounted stuff, I just, I just find the.
Well, I think there's more worries with that, right? I mean, when you, when you put it on the ground, now there's a lot more potential impact, whether it's neighbors vegetation or things like that. If it's on your own roof, I guess you're not gonna, it could cause a glare issue or something like that, but you're not gonna impact, you know, like my neighbor's vegetation or.
Their shade, you're not gonna shade their property or.
But it's a good question to bring up.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just, I'll, I'll have to make a point of looking around and trying to find a house with a solar, but.
If you drive up Jannevar to the end, there's, there's one up there near, near Pat's.
I don't know, maybe you have to.
Oh, you know, I don't even know if I've ever even, I'm gonna look now.
Because certain things, depending on where it is, a ground level one can be kind of hidden from the road with the right kind of vegetation.
Setbacks.
And what's setback?
Setbacks usually, yeah. But that's the kind of stuff we gotta hash out, I think, and.
And, and, and those are a lot of those kind of fill-in-the-blank things there. There's stuff about, you know, what, if any setbacks there, should there be for different areas? Certain things, what zones do you want to allow these things in?
Well, I think it was, I, I printed one page out from the town of Ithaca, and it had the setbacks or some, I think I've got this straight, dictated by which, which district it's in.
Yeah.
Which makes more sense than just having an accessory building and all being, you know, pretty much standard. So I think we have to look at that pretty closely.
Yeah, and in the model law, it's, they do it by, like, some of the stuff, their, their setbacks are based on, well, for roof mounting, obviously. But yeah, some, some of them are based on the tier. So like, if you've got a larger scale system, like a tier three or tier four, those have a much, you know, larger setback, almost to a point where, I mean, it might be, you know, harder to do. So like, if you wanted to put tier four, which is massive, in an area that was zoned residential, I mean, you're talking, you know, with hundred-foot setbacks all over the place, so that might preclude you from doing it, yeah, right.
Although a hundred feet isn't as far back as you might.
It really isn't, because, you know, it's a couple of large.
My house, I think, is about a hundred feet from the road, and.
But for, but when you factor in tier four, how big that has to be, i- i- if you actually take a look at the rest of the language in there, it almost prohibits you from being able to do it unless you've got some real special situation. But all worth looking at, there's also things in, you know, about agricultural districts, which we don't have many of, but we do have. So it's important to focus on them, so there's, there's specific language, and it starts talking about permitting and the tiers and the districts.
I have noticed in riding around it also a lot, in Cataraugus County, on 86 on the right, there's a large, used to be a large farmer's field, is now a solar right. Which actually doesn't, you know, because it's very rural, it doesn't really look that bad.
Well, it's right, it depends.
Some fields, I can't say where, but just taking rides around here, I've seen some farmers' fields, they're growing solar panels.
Depends on where you are, I mean, if you drive up 13, which is a heavily traveled road to, you know, you know, Dryden, there are some big farms right there, and that's a major corridor. If you look at the solar array on Game Farm Road. If you look at the solar array on Game Farm Road, that's more of a, you know, kind of off the beaten path back there. People are, people are taking, you know, three sixty-six or, you know, um, drive the road to get to, to three sixty-six up by Nice Egg, they're not meandering back around there. Now it's different if you live there, I'm sure you drive past and you see it all the time, but.
That's right, I guess it is on Route thirteen where I've seen them.
And one of the big concerns with that is, um, if we are driving away farming and replacing it with solar, there's a lot of concern about, um, losing at, using high quality ag soils for places where solar is being put in. Um, and that's, that's a huge debate right now.
Really big concern. And although I guess for some of the ones that have animals, you can get some sort of thing, but I, I read about that, I would love to hear about how it really works.
It, it only really works with sheep, not goats.
Not goats.
No, goats will climb on top of your solar.
Oh, okay.
So it only, they, they love to climb, um, so it only really works with sheep. Uh, cows don't, don't work well with it, um, and, and we don't have any large sheep farms.
No, we don't.
It's funny though, if you, if you go up to Game Farm Road, cause I, I bike up there because there's a, there's a rail trail up there, it's funny if you go up there in the one where whether you show the solar panels, yeah, there's just sheep meandering around eating the plants, around the panels. There's an area they like to cluster in the corner there, yeah.
I'm just curious, I didn't hear you said, what climbs up and top of them?
Goats.
Goats.
Goats will climb on anything, um, so it's only sheep and so, I mean, I guess if you want to be able to have those uses together, go eat more goat cheese.
Yeah.
Like up on Game Farm Road, I don't think they're using that as a source of revenue, I think they're using it as a way to keep some grass down and have some, and have some.
Well, like rent a goat, you know, to get rid of poison ivy, I mean, yeah.
Um, but yeah, so like I said, um, we're going to meet this weekend, we're going to start tagging some things that we need to discuss and we'll get it out to everybody before the next meeting, um, to start adding to. I don't think that we'll discuss it at the next meeting, cause that won't have given folks. That's the, that's the kind of.
Kind of focus on it, oh, yeah.
I do have a question about cooperating with other municipalities, uh, cause you mentioned, you know, the town has hashed these out, um, are there opportunities to kind of sit with some of the other municipalities and find out, okay, so what are the issues you are finding so that, so that, you know, we can kind of cooperatively figure out, like, you know, learn from each other?
Absolutely. And we've, we've done that on some things before, I know, so one of the things is obviously we'll do that with Kewa Heights because of Brent, so that's, that one's pretty easy and straightforward, you know, hey Brent, do you have one of these yes or no? Um, there's a good opportunity there, um, but I know Carolyn's reached out to some, um, to the village and some other areas before to, or to the, to the town, um, to, for that very topic.
Well, of course Marty, having been our former code officer, is down there too, so I'm sure we could tap him as a resource, our code officer could.
Yes. Mike's like, oh man.
Oh man, here we go.
I thought I was gonna make it out of this meeting.
There it is, and also he, on this one, he's very red on this one compared to where we're at.
And on that note, did, did anyone have any other questions about solar? Cause if not, that is a perfect segue into a task that Michael had. Thanks, Mike. Um, so the next item is the discussion of the new sewer effects to, um, LDR District Subdivision. And Mike put together a nice package for us.
Well, this was, I apologize, it's took me so long to do this, uh, though, the, I think the focus on this was, there was so much there that I tried to back down all of the criteria to try to make this easy to understand. What we're trying to do here is find out the effects that the sewer would have on subdividing or subdivision in the low density residential district along East Shore Drive and Kewa Heights Road. Um, I sent out an earlier email, uh, we still, uh, pointing that, uh, the minimum lot size for a sewered lot is point seven acres, minimum lot size for a non-sweared lot is one point four acres. Uh, that's what we were looking for, or that's what I was using to find out whether someone could come in and get a subdivision and be able to subdivide their parcel into more lots without having to go through a special permit or some other item. One of the driving factors of this is actually frontage. Um, if you don't have the frontage, it doesn't matter what size lot you have, um, you would have to go through a special permit or some type of cluster subdivision to be able to subdivide into, uh, more lots than, than what was allowed for code. Um, to, and for, for all of this, it, it came down to, there would be twenty-four additional lots on East Shore and twenty-nine additional lots on Kewa Heights Road. These are lots that were figured, that would not need a special permit or would be, uh, subject to any other, um, uh, criteria that would cause for a variance or anything like that. Um, what I did, well, first of all, wanted to find out if anybody had any questions about this before I go over these examples that, uh, hopefully will help explain, you know, what I, what I went through, because it wasn't that bad, but what I had to do or how I came up with these numbers. Anybody had any specific questions about this?
So I, I would say I have trouble unless it's a visual frankly, but so, when you say twenty-four on East Shore Drive, do you mean there are twenty-four lots now that could be divided or that it could be, that taking what we've got now, they could, there are twenty-four.
Twenty-four more.
Twenty-four additional, twenty-four additional lots.
Yep, twenty-four additional lots on East Shore and twenty-nine additional lots on Kewa Heights Road.
It just seems, that seems so many on Kewa Heights Road.
Well, you know, a lot of it, like I explained, was frontage and you have a lot of lots have more frontage, um, therefore if they have the actual, um, if they have the actual acreage, they, they would be allowed to, um, subdivide into more lots. Now, you gotta understand, there are certain, there are certain lots on Kewa Heights, um, where it's not realistic for someone to subdivide. You've got, uh, where our former mayor lives, I mean, areas that have gorges and gullies and whatnot, but that's just another factor that's, that would make this more difficult to figure out. This is, this is roundabout knowledge, or not roundabout knowledge, this is, it's kind of, these are roundabout numbers. Um, there's nothing here that's super precise, but it's, it's pretty darn accurate, I think, after I went through it.
Well, I, I meant, I, I thought I had printed out your full email that you wrote back, um, E G and, you know, early in the month, and I only seem to have gotten part of it somehow, cause I remember.
Do you have one, do you have one through nine listed on there?
I have one through six.
Oh yeah, there's three more.
I know, I know, cause I remember the, the figure of twenty-nine, since I'm on Kewa Heights Road, I'm thinking, where the heck are these gonna go?
You want me to read through that, Lisa?
You said, you want my copy?
I'll, I'll just get it, I, I'll, I'll just get another print, I just mean, I suddenly thought I had, you know.
Eight, eight was, eight was where he said there could be additional, the number of additional.
I knew it was somewhere and I was thinking, where the heck is that?
Nine, nine was he'll explain things at this meeting. Uh, seven, the one that really, the substantial one you're missing is because there's several branch roads connected to East Shore Drive and Kewa Heights Road. Many properties have the advantage of counting extra frontage on the side arteries, therefore increasing the possibility.
Right, the corner, yes.
So right, they have, it's not like my house, the only frontage I have is verdict, these have frontage in more than one road.
Right, so.
That counts.
Yeah, like there was this one actually here, I think it's one nine twenty-seven, on Kewa Heights Road, which is example number, what, four?
Three.
Example number four.
No, it's example four.
Example four.
Which has frontage on both Oak Crest and Kewa Heights.
Yep, so that's extra frontage.
Well, so.
Well, Mike, do you want to, do you want to walk us through, uh?
Yeah.
Do you want us, do you want us?
Yeah, I'll bring some of the, I'll bring these up on the screen here.
Good.
Um, is that coming through okay there?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's your first example, and this is typical, um, this lot has, well, the sewer has no effect on this lot. What you're looking at is two hundred and nineteen, uh, feet of frontage. So you couldn't get two lots because it's a hundred and fifty foot for, uh, is the minimum for a single lot, you'd need three hundred foot of frontage just to be able to subdivide. So they do have the acreage to subdivide, but they would need a special permit, or they would need, actually they would need a variance for, for the frontage. So that's not being counted in what my, um, what my homework was. This basically is not affected at all. So, now if we go to example two. Here's, here's where you start getting, where it starts getting a little bit interesting. You have a five acre lot has, um, about eleven hundred foot of frontage on both Black Chin Boulevard and East Shore Drive. So, with that, note here, uh, technically if you split eleven hundred foot of frontage into a hundred and fifty foot frontage each, you could technically do seven lots if there's enough available, you could do seven lots there. Now, it's a little unrealistic because if you look at, say, this corner, if you put a lot here, you're going to be eating up a lot in this corner lot. Um, you'd be eating three hundred foot just for one lot, but if you found someone, uh, an engineer who was very clever, I'm sure they could find some way to get, um, seven lots on this and use the, uh, frontage, um, effectively.
Hey, hey Mike, can I ask you one quick question? I'm just thinking, Millcroft, um, in areas, not enough Black Chins as an example, but are there deed restrictions that prevent, um, you from doing that?
Yeah.
Do you know about deed restrictions in Black Chin at all or no?
I don't know, uh, you like, they might have some type of covenant in there.
Yeah, it might be, you know, hey, here's your minimum lot size, it's gotta be at least an acre or something like that, so, but you can have that, and I'm just, just curious.
Well, this kind of begs the question because this is not a low rent district, number one, so there's must be a reason these five acres haven't already been developed.
And as you look around, other than fourteen right there, I mean, they are all relatively big lots.
But the other thing is, is where would you curb cut this? You can't be curb cutting onto East Shore Drive, so they have to go onto Black Chin, right?
I mean, no, not necessarily, you can.
Well, I guess not, but seven curb cuts is not gonna apply.
No, I don't think, uh, I don't think that, uh, especially, um, you know, DPW wants the correct amount of space in between curb cuts for, you know, snow removal and things like that, so.
Right. And so for instance, if they wanted to maximize their five acres here, um, would it have to go into, say, like a cluster development?
I would think so.
That would have an entrance at Black Chin as opposed to all the curb cuts in the.
Possible.
Yeah.
And it's not to say that at some point, it's not something we might want to entertain, but it would have to be, I don't know.
I don't know, seems like that would take up an awful lot of trees there.
But I, I think your point to the, yeah, well, this is, okay, so, just saying, I, I don't mean to interrupt the flow here, but I did look at the comprehensive plan and, and there were a couple of things that I thought, okay, cause you need to just be making reasonable. One of them is planning strategies for residential growth, limiting development that requires additional curb cuts onto North Tripphammer, Kewa Heights Road, Warren Road and Route thirty-four East Shore Drive. That was one thing that I noted. And, um, sidewalks and bike paths, of course, what, but then planning for character quality and sustainability is, you know, maintaining open space and view sheds.
Absolutely, yep.
And that's of all the things that I worry about with all of this, it's, it's people wanting to subdivide, cut down, put a bunch of houses on, and the whole character of your neighborhood is just totally different. And I just worry about that, which is why I asked Mike to please do this.
So Mike, in this example here, example two, say somebody wanted to divide this into three lots, what's the process for that?
Well, you either do a major subdivision or you divide it, uh, into minor, keep doing minor subdivisions until you reach that quantity.
Yeah.
Um, but what I was saying is, in, in theory, you know, with eleven hundred square foot of frontage, you could get seven lots, um, seven, without, um, with the sewer going in, um, and you need one point, or you actually need one point, uh.
Four.
Acres for a lot, you, you're only going to get three lots, but if you have a sewered area comes through and you need point six eight acres for a lot, you can get seven lots. So you're actually gaining, uh, four lot, well, three if you, uh, you count the original lot. So it does have an effect on a property such as this.
Yep. So I think that's a good example though, right?
Yeah.
And, and we do this as we go on, but always to keep in the back of your mind, hey, whatever it is that, you know, this special permits for this subdivision, whether it's major or minor, what does the complaint have to say about that?
Yeah, well, that was one of the things, every once in a while I remember to look at the complaint and think, wait a minute, and, and building my case here, you know?
Yeah, and we can think about how, how we might want to encourage or discourage, um, how people break up their property. So for instance, in this case, you know, if you did some sort of cluster, you could save a lot of green space.
Yes.
A lot of shared green space and have up to five houses.
Yes.
So, you know, do we have a mechanism to make that more attractive than someone who's just gonna want to cut it up?
Right, I know people have come and they've talked about like, you know, little smaller pocket neighborhoods before.
Yeah.
That's a great way to do that too, while maintaining that green space, so.
Remember, there's a, there's a bunch of farmland also on East Shore that could actually develop into cluster subdivisions, I mean, there's, there's a section that has four hundred and fifty, close to five hundred acres, I mean, it's half in, not half in, but it combines in the town and village. So, you know, it's kind, it's hard to count, you know, what the effect of the sewer would be on that, but just by having a sewer there would be a lot easier for someone to make up a cluster subdivision. Um, here is example three, this is, um, ten forty-four Kewa Heights Road, uh, where they have plenty of frontage, uh, they have close to, um, looks like five hundred foot of frontage. Uh, the orig- the initial lot itself is two point five four acres, which means under the, um, lot size for a non-swear, they couldn't even subdivide this, they wouldn't have enough acreage for it.
Yep.
But they certainly wouldn't have enough acreage, uh, if a sewer went through, you could actually get three lots out of this.
Really?
Yep, depending on how you, you know, depending on how you break it up, yeah. You could come off with, you could come off of Kewa Heights Road with maybe two new flag lots and run them all the way back.
Sure, yeah, that's true.
Cause they, they count the frontage from East Shore Drive, this frontage is frontage.
Yeah.
Let's not forget, somebody could buy that piece of property, knock the house down entirely and say, look at all this property I have, I can do whatever I want with it now. I don't think that'll happen here, by the way.
Oh, look at, are these solar panels?
Yes, those are solar panels there. Those are indeed three solar panels.
My last example, and this is happening, and Lisa I think brought up there, point seven.
What?
I've had someone ask me if they could subdivide this and I said, well, you don't have enough acreage, you'd have to get a variance. This is another typical one where they only have one point five two acres, but they have plenty of frontage, it happens to be on two different streets, you still, frontage is frontage, um, whereas a sewer comes in through here and they can actually break that into two lots now, without, without an issue, um, without even coming to the board, or, without even getting a variance or having to have any other, uh, any other permission from any other boards, it would be a minor subdivision, but still they would have all[1698.33] but still they would have all the criteria, uh, that would, that they would need to meet to have that minor subdivision. So this is a, this is a perfect example of what the, um, the sewer requirements, uh, what the effect it has on zoning. And that's all I got. All that, all that time and everything, I come up with four stinking examples.
I thought, actually, I had enough frontage, but I must not have enough acreage.
I didn't want to bring yours up, Lisa. You.
That's what I said to Natalie. I get, yeah, take this up.
If you want, I can review.
But it's good to know. So, but we get the drift. Well, I'm very concerned about this personally, obviously. Um, and I.
What's your address, Lisa?
Nine seven five.
You can add years, you could add two more if the sewer comes through.
That's just, it's just wrong. It's wrong.
Affordable housing, that's a, yeah, there you go.
Workforce housing.
Workforce. You could do workforce. Well, thanks, Mike, for that one.
Thank you. I know it took a long time. It's, it's just. I've. Is, is this what we want as a village? That's what I'm asking. Has any, I mean, did, when the idea of having the sewer come down Kewa Heights Road, I don't know how, what was discussed, whether it was even considered about this. I know I brought it up previously with the former mayor had expressed concerns, and there was some talk about possibly changing the lot size that would be required. But I think it's not that simple. But I mean, is anybody else concerned about this besides me? Does anybody else care besides me? Cause.
No, I think, I think you have a valid point. You know, we don't want to, you know, I know there's some people in favor of workforce or affordable housing. I don't think the village wants a proliferation of development and structures. It's pretty rural and that wants to be maintained.
That's not what people would do here either.
No, probably not. But you, but you can't, you can't count on that.
Oh, you can't.
On that at all. I mean.
But no, but no, and then that's my point. I don't think that's what people would do. I don't think anyone would. Well, they're probably, well, outside, there's at least one person would. But there's a lot of people that do things that they probably shouldn't do.
Yes. Well, I, I, the point is, you know, when I moved here, it's been a long time, but I took a look around and I said, okay, house here, house here, it is developed. I'm not gonna have anybody move right in thirty feet from this lot line here. And I chose it for that reason. Now, I still don't have to subdivide my lot, but my neighbor could. And then I've got the same situation. And it's just, it changes the character. I am concerned about curb cuts because people go streaking down both Kewa Heights Road and East Shore Drive. I just.
And they love my road because that downhill, oh, yeah.
But I, I just think that, you know, is this what, I don't mind cluster. I think there are certain situations where it would be absolutely. We should incentivize these things, but how do we protect? I mean, view sheds even. How do we protect these things if we don't, what are we gonna do with this?
I would say this, the character that we have on Kewa Heights Road, and I'll say this because I'll say we because I'm a few doors down from you. Um, a, a point six acre spot is still gonna maintain that kind of character. Um, that I'm not so concerned about. I am concerned about, um, and I'm not even concerned about curb cuts on Kewa Heights Road. People do speed, especially as Kewa Heights Road straightens out. Um, but honestly, curb cuts on a scale of road that's on Kewa Heights slows down traffic. People tend to go more slowly if they can, they see there's more curb cuts along a road that's like that on East Shore, no curb cut is gonna change that. Cause it's already established as being a much faster road. Um, so, so we have to really look at the speed of the road. Um, and whether curb cuts affect the speed of the road, depending on like what it's signed to be. Um, and then, and then, you know, if, if minimum point six still maintains the character, then are we okay with that? And do we want to add other things to how we evaluate? Um, to be able to make sure that even though it might be smaller, there might be a couple more houses along that stretch. Um, what are the values of that view shed? What are the values of how we treat nature and treat trees in that area to keep that kind of character?
You gotta ask yourself whether those, that estimate I had that are the fifty some, would fifty some more lots or fifty some more single family residents turn low density residential into something that you don't, it no longer low density, taking that one step over to medium density. I don't think it will ever jump itself to medium density residential because the driving over sadness is actually frontage.
Yeah.
Medium density residential is only a hundred.
Yeah.
Then you can open up a brand new area if you're into that. So.
And then I would suggest things like, you know, if we overlay this with, say, where the bus stops are. You know, there's, uh, do we, do we look at, you know, do we want to be a little bit more free about development right near bus stops so that encourages folks to hop on a bus instead of using their car?
Do we even have bus stops?
I, I walk from my house to the corner, um, you know, up, yeah, up, um, to, in front of the, uh, the, the water treatment. And I'll take the bus downtown.
The bus goes there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I take the bus frequently there.
Is it the thirty-sixth or something?
Yeah.
Whatever that goes out to the Lansing Town Hall in back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, you know, so, I mean, we can think about how planning decisions, um, can affect like nodal development.
Right.
And whether we want to encourage, encourage or discourage certain kinds of development in certain spots.
Well, I think that I had added this anyway to the, I think I have a file here for this.
What?
Um, just this topic in general.
Yeah.
I did, so. Yeah.
I mean, just a sewer in general, if you had farmland up there, and in this area, you know how farms are becoming a thing of the past. Um, if you've got a sewered area now, or your farmland's right next to sewer, uh, sewer system, a perfect example, have a, some type of, uh, you know, up on Beaumont or what's.
Well, to, what about, um, Fish Farm or whatever we're calling it, you know, so. That property now has frontage on Kewa Heights Road, has frontage over here. I mean, and, and will be on a sewer.
Yeah, I mean, around the corner from you too, like, there's crusts, that whole lot there.
Four hundred and some odd acres, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about that earlier.
I've had calls on it.
I'm sure. Well. Thank you.
Interesting.
It will.
Yeah, it will be. I mean, because honestly, like if I were, if I were looking at node development, I would say stick to those places like off of Trip Hammer. You've got a farm field that's not really a great farm field, never was. The soils there aren't great. And if it has a sewer now, then develop there and keep the rest of your development area kind of sacred.
I, I think that, that's hard. How do you do that, of course? Um, but yeah, it, there are certain areas that I think would be more appropriate than others is the point.
Yeah. Well, I think at some point, I mean, sewer guns could become an issue too, when we talk about.
Well, that's another thing.
If you, if you, if you talk about, you know, I'm gonna take my five hundred acres and I'm gonna turn it into, uh, I don't know if there's enough capacity for that.
Right. And what's the tax implication of that?
It's not ag anymore.
It's definitely not ag anymore.
That's right. Oh, boy.
Do you need other tasks, Mike? Now that this one's done, I mean. I'm treating it, gonna count all the trees on every lot at some point. Was that Natalie? No, it's Mike I think. Take some pictures. Um, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the trustee report. Cool. Next item on the, no. Uh, the, the last one in January got, or in December got canceled, so there was not one. Um, though, next, this month is Lorraine, and there are zero this month. Um, for February, it's bad. Yes.
He was the last one to have to do it practically. Or I was, I don't know.
It was probably you.
I, I think we gotta start looking at that. I don't think it should be by month. I think if, if you have none, that we should move it forward, pay it forward.
We talked about it. The people had already made plans this year, but I will overlay it. It's hard to tell when the trustees are gonna have a meeting, when they're not gonna have a meeting. I don't know. I'm just picking the offices.
They'll cancel both meetings in February.
President's weekend.
It is President's Weekend that's coming up, so.
No, this is MLK.
No, it's MLK.
Yeah, MLK.
But isn't there a president's, uh, birthday in February?
Yeah.
Yeah.
February sixth, their twentieth, are the, uh.
One is about the third week.
It's gotta be somewhere.
I don't know if I have it all.
MLK is his next.
Yeah, MLK is, it's Monday.
So, so there will not be a meeting on the twentieth. So there you go. See, you paid on the.
Yeah, you already got out of one, yeah.
So he's gonna take it after all.
Twice, twice as many. Uh, okay. Uh, with that, um, Alora and Emily, do you have anything you wanted to bring up for discussion?
Um, I have noticed that the, the thing that Lorraine brought up about, um, some of the settlement kind of situation behind the pizza is getting worse. Who is, so we don't really have control of that. It has to do with the property owner, correct?
It does, um, to a, it could be stretched into a property maintenance issue. Um, I'm hoping that it just gets settled through the owner and they take care of, take some pride in what they have there to take care of. If it doesn't, then it's possible to go through.
Yeah.
Property.
I haven't seen, I haven't ever seen people there just, I noticed.
There, and actually, I think, but things I've looked, especially this last week, I've been in that one lane, so, you know, I've almost gotten on that corner. Um, it looks like, like the grocery cart is gone and it actually looks like there's less padding, but I always look to see, is somebody in there?
I know it's hard to tell. I don't think there's, there's in there, but.
Can't they just clean it up behind there? It's creepy.
Who owns that property? Not the, not the same people that own the mall?
No.
No, Metzler's owned it.
Cause I would say, I remember some people came in some, two years ago or something, looking for.
And then a bank bought it and they haven't done anything to it.
Oh, it's the bank.
Oh, a bank, oh.
I can't.
Taking pride in what you have, thinking it's a bank that owns it.
So you're saying the bank also owns a pizza hut as well as that property with the, um, encampment evidence?
Oh, I don't think.
Well, the Pizza Hut's a separate lot and that's what the bank owns.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And this isn't really part of that encampment part that we saw some pictures of. This is just in the back of the Pizza Hut. There is, yeah, the back door to Pizza, somebody has set up some sort of.
Do, do you know if the bank owns it because of foreclosure or if the bank actually bought it with the intent of development?
The history I've gotten is Metzler's were selling it to a bank, I guess, franchise, whatever. And they were gonna turn that into a drive through.
Brayers, yeah.
And I don't know whether that has gone through or not. There was some issues with.
We did something because there's a right of way.
It was in the corner of the building. I guess that got worked out, and I'm not sure whether that deal went through. I think it did. But I've been dealing with the real estate agent saying, look, hey, you gotta get this to the right person. And supposedly they were doing it.
Isn't there still a for sale sign out front though?
Yeah, there is.
Sale sign out front of Pizza Hut.
They probably saw it if they could. You know, at least, I'll tell you what, the awareness is there because, um, dealing with trying to finalize aldis, um, I've been working with Matt, who is the, um, I guess the maintenance guy for, for Bricksmore for that old Kewa Mall facility. And I'm talking about the homeless and the encampments. He says they now have in their schedule, each week they walk around, make sure that there's no one around.
That's good. Oh, good. Are they, are there people living behind the Kewa Mall?
Uh, he says he's only had to pick up some trash here or there, but he hasn't been, had to kick anyone out since it was someone on, um, Grand Road at that one time.
Yeah.
So is it still Bricksmore? Because I see the for sale, you know, space things, they're sort of like Flowam or something is the name.
Which is maybe.
Is it that, but Bricksmore still is the mall owner, correct?
As I know, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I wonder if anybody will ever buy the front, the empty friendlies too.
I just had somebody ask me what they were gonna do with that.
With what?
Friendly thing.
I, I hate seeing.
Friendly, that's too.
I hate seeing these empty buildings.
It seems like that would be a reasonable piece of real, if you wanted to do a restaurant. I don't know.
Can't get staff.
That's true.
Oh, and I wondered, and I also, oh, I had wanted to bring up a couple of things, actually.
Do you have anything else to say, sir?
No, not really. I just was wondering.
Um, did everybody see the article that the Ithaca Voice had about Kewa Medical, um, receiving that one point five million dollars for the, you know that that facility is gonna go in the mall. Were you aware of that?
That's what you can do. Whether they are trying to, if they try to incorporate that facility into their clinic, then that's an issue because you approve the clinic and not this other use.
I think I printed it out.
If they're looking to put it in Sears, they're going to have to come in front of it anyway.
I, I printed it out because I was upset when I saw.
Last time I heard Sears is supposed to be a training facility or something.
Stay upset. I was surprised.
Yeah, they did tell them, that's right.
Important parts too.
This may have changed if they got some.
I just. So I, I actually.
If you knew.
But I, I don't really, I never, I did not see there. I could just, it was mentioned in, so could, can you tell all of us what this is about?
Yeah, so they received. They were, um, they had applied for a one point five million dollar grant, um, and they won it. And it's for an intensive, they're gonna use it for an intensive crisis stabiliz, stabilization center of Tompkins County, which will be in collaboration between CHS, I'm not sure what that stands for. And, um, eight other community partners, um, let's see, um, large slice of the overall pot to allocate to one project, but argue that it would be a truly transformative project meant to coincide with the detox center opening in Lansing and operated by the Alcohol and Drug Council, which is down the street.
Right.
Um, Stallone's described the facility, which will be housed at the new hospital-owned portion of the shops at Ithaca Mall as a mental health-oriented organization and service to be less than the emergency room level of care, but more than what exists in the community.
The hospital-owned portion of it is the Bonton, cause.
Right.
Sears, I thought they were leasing Sears.
No, they bought Sears.
Did they buy both of them?
Oh, it's, it's those two inner stores. It's the gap and whatever.
So, there's one more. It says, the hospital is serving as the leader of the effort, but will be collaborating with organizations like Reach Medical, Alcohol and Drug Council, Tompkins County Mental Health, and more to operate the space. So when I read that, I got very concerned because that'll bring in a whole different crowd of people over there. And so if you expect to have anybody else down the road move into that mall, whether it's other businesses, hospitality, anything like that, it's probably not gonna happen.
Oh, you mean, you're saying it will deter other.
Well, and I mean, it's concerning anyway, thinking about.
Depends on the degree of what.
Yeah, I was gonna say yes and no.
City crisis stabilization center. So that tells me it's where you go if you're ODing.
Yeah, right. So, like.
I assume there'll be different precautions. If it goes into that space, it won't be free exit in and out of the mall as it is now. You know, it would be a shut off from the mall entrance side.
But I, but I worry about the whole community on that end. I don't know if you remember a couple of summers ago, I'm not sure what was going on, but there was a lot of loitering going on to the entrance, um, off of Trip Hammer, the first mall entrance, close to Tops and the, the hotel there. They were all hanging out. I think that someone was employing these people down in the mall area. Do you remember that? When they were all hanging out, sitting on the ledges and the.
The one thing about having something identified and be an official site, I think is better than some of the kind of situations we have where people are being housed in local hotels. And it's not kind of official, do you know what I mean? It, it strikes, and, and so, I don't know, because obviously we have a huge mental health issue. And there's a huge need. I'm, I'm almost more in favor of an identified, policed, or policed, but monitored place than this kind of informal thing, which was where, in fact, I, I attended, you know, the Alcohol and Drug Council open house before they even opened, and they were trying to, you know, inform the community. And one of the, I think it was one of the local businesses said, these people are loitering around my business and, and, you know, and she said, but we're not even open yet. It wasn't from the Alcohol and Drug Council, because it was from this other situation that is, I think, the Cold Blue or whatever it is, where, you know, you have to house, house people at certain temperatures of the year. And so they, you, but I don't think we even knew it was going, or I certainly didn't. I didn't think a lot of us know what's, was going on because it's a county thing. But I, I guess what I'm wondering too is how are we gonna, we can't afford to have our mall empty, but all of these are, are not-for-profit organizations, right? They don't, they don't have a tax base. How does, do we have any control over this?
They did mention that they pay taxes.
They, oh, they did. They do. Cause I, I don't, is it.
They came up when they were first here.
Okay.
Cause actually they, they made the specific comment about putting that space back on the tax roll.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Cause I don't understand the difference between, I just recently realized that there's Kewa Medical Center and there's a Kewa Medical Associates.
Well, pretty soon we'll all be together. We won't have to have the two.
But, yeah, I don't know. This, and I, and I think we've heard rumors that, what, Best Buy is leaving?
Oh, they are? I didn't, oh, I haven't heard that. Dixie's, but Best Buy is too?
I also heard that Walmart was going in there.
Did they say Best Buy is leaving?
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
In, in the mall.
What's going in there? Walmart?
Someone told me they heard that.
Oh, really? My.
Yeah, there's a, there's a guy who has a Whole Foods coming to.
Yeah, the, oh, yeah, I, I remember that. And I was really disappointed, I was actually disappointed that wasn't true. I would love to have a Whole Foods. I would love to have a Whole Foods.
There's a guy on Caroline or a person on Caroline who has a Whole Foods coming soon sign on the front wall.
Yeah, that was a couple years ago, I remember.
It's still there.
Oh, is it really? People were fluffing out about that. They were like, is it really gonna happen?
That's a great sense of humor.
So Dix's, Dix's is moving out, but they haven't even started anything down at Tops. I think they're trying to subdivide the, the building, right? Because that's on the planning, the Ithaca Planning Board, but I've been following that. But Brian Crandall reports on it. But what is going in, there's something else going in downtown next to Chili's, I think.
Yeah, I was curious.
There's no sign. I've been looking for a sign.
A bank.
I'm not sure which one.
Yeah.
Bank?
A bank.
Like they need another bank in town.
That was in that Sundown's neighborhood, next door.
I can't remember the last one.
Somebody asked that question.
It's gotta be either a, a bank, a storage unit, or a Dollar Star, one of the other.
Oh, probably.
Another Dollar.
So Best Buy is.
Dollar Star behind us, it's gotta be Dollar General or.
Yeah, right.
Is it true that Best Buy is leaving?
Are they, are they leaving or moving?
Moving, moving.
Okay. I was told they're going in with Dix and the old Tops. That's what they're gonna.
Oh, is that where they're trying to get them?
That's what I was told.
A reliable source.
So those, that's, that would be another big loss.
I'll be sad to see them go, but.
So what are they gonna?
When we hear something, we hear.
So who's gonna buy that end of the mall?
Rumors.
Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the New York State Department state trainings, the live WebEx's. So I actually signed up for three of them and I've already done one, the secret training, and it was great. Anyway, I have one more. I signed up for the planning board overview, which is this week, and next week is the zoning board. So I signed up for.
When I started on the board, I took, or maybe not the first year, because I think you and I went to.
We, we went up to George.
Planning Federation.
But then the year after that, or no, no, I take that back. When I started, I had to get my credits in and I took those ones and I thought they were good.
Yeah, no, they're.
They should have them down pat at this point. I mean, it's.
Oh, yeah, no, it was very professionally run. They had three panelists and I think it'll probably be, it might even be this, I don't know if it's the same panelist each time, but yeah, it was great.
Is that the Planning Federation or State Department?
State Department.
Really?
They have like almost 300 people on that WebEx. And, yeah.
And it counts for your hours too.
Yeah, and they, and the WebEx, they warned everybody, the WebEx can tell if you're actually paying attention or not. And they let people know.
How can it?
It can tell if you're, apparently it can tell if you're clicking and opening other windows on your computer. And they told people that they can keep track of that. And they only, may only get half credit if they.
Sounds like they're just pulling your leg.
I don't know, they were dead serious.
Curry on it, when you ask your questions.
No.
No.
They said it, like they had a warning.
During the other required training.
Do I know that he asked survey questions throughout the course of it? Or like at the end of each session, yeah, just to make, he's like, you still here? Good, you're still here.
That was the harassment stuff, yeah, yeah. That's fair enough. I mean, we used to do this too when we, this was all pretty. And it was a real issue because, yeah, people turn on and then they wander up and do something. And then they come back and then, you know, and these were physicians, which kind of under the. But what the heck?
Yeah, no, but they're the trainers.
Yeah, no, they, yeah.
They're continuing, I think, to do their, I thought I saw an email from the luncheon.
There was, that was the Planning Federation.
That was the Planning Federation, yeah.
Oh, was there, how come I don't get those emails?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't get them either.
You're not special.
You probably have enough of them, yeah.
Because I've done a few of the, the webinars that are recorded.
I could find one we got today.
Yeah, there was one.
Yeah, I'm not on that list.
How do I get on that list?
Came in today, didn't it, luncheon? Why don't you send that up?
Department of State ones you just talked about.
No, those are live. Those are live.
Well, there has a village membership to the Planning Federation. I bet you there's probably something where you could add names to that list.
Watch record.
Um, I think they send you the regu, maybe afterwards, but you have to actually sign up. And then they immediately send you a request with the live link with a code specific to you. So when you sign in, they know you're Jim.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not supposed to share, yeah, you're not supposed to share the, share the link with other people. They won't know it to.
I think Joey might have sent, or Mike originally sent out about this.
They'll, they'll send planning stuff to Joey.
Oh, okay.
And she'll send it out to you. And then when I get stuff from Department of State that pertains to Planning Board BZ or whatnot, then I'll forward it to you.
Okay. I know Joey sent something out in late November.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it was. Lisa, were you laughing at me?
Well, I'm gonna forward this one out to everybody, so. Uh, what else? Jim?
I don't have anything.
Mike?
Um, I think I'd already said this, maybe not, but there's been, there's been a few meetings. The last Thursday meeting of the Board of Trustees, I had suggested to the trustee members that they disassemble the lighting commission. My reasoning for that was the lighting commission did a fantastic job. When we had, basically, we had guidelines for lighting. Now that we have a law for lighting, it kind of falls into my office. So instead of trying to get a committee together, going over ideas or whatnot, it seemed kind of useless when, if you did get a committee together, that you have all these